Right now.
You ready? Okay. Welcome, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge.
Pledge. I have to say it's a little hard. And to the Republic, for which it has one nation, one God, and to this world, we're delivering these values to all.
Okay. Are we recording, Mrs. Michelle?
We know I hit the report button, but it didn't say.
I didn't hear it.
No, I heard nothing, but it's recording.
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you, and I got an announcement, it's recording, so. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yep, I got a pop up saying it's being recorded, so that's good.
Yeah, but there's no volume.
Andrew, you're fine with that.
Can you guys not hear me?
Good enough. Can now.
Can now?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the September twenty-sixth meeting of the Middle Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, or is there any amendments?
Motion.
Any comments of, I'll second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
All right.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September twelve?
Motion.
Any comments or quest, oh, I'll second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, Pat, could we have a report of executive session, please?
Sure, the board met immediately before this evening's regular meeting to discuss a real estate item in executive sessions. No decisions were made under the permission of the place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? And that includes any, let's see, it looks like there's only Drew on. Oh, Chris Farley. Anybody have any public comment on non-agenda items? Anybody? Yes, Charlie.
They're gonna do it here.
Oh, you could do it.
I'm about to skip it up. So just an update on what's going on with the, um, former Deerfield Spa, New Coconut Bridge, um, we're waiting on our, we had a pre-final inspection from Middle Smithfield Township, again, and, and so far as we're zoning, willing to come out at a lead hour to meet our needs of being there and, um, did a wonderful job towards what we need to do. We have early completed, no later, probably Sunday, ready for the final inspection next week. We anticipate getting an open line, find it out through the website to come in and, uh, the, uh, disclosure. So it'll be called the Coconut Ridge Inn and they will fill me back in breakfast.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any other, uh, public comment on any non-agenda items? Okay, uh, announcements. Uh, Mike, you have a thousand feet.
Yeah, we have, uh, Thousand Feet Street this Saturday, uh, here at seven thirty, between seven thirty and eight o'clock. Uh, Christopher will hand out vests, bags, pickers. There'll be breakfast provided. That's it.
Okay. Uh, and you might remember Memory Makers was, uh, rescheduled, and that will be, so right after you pick up garbage, if you are a longtime resident, we'll be happy to have you at Memory Makers, which is from twelve to two, um, over at the community center. And then you have cleanup in October.
Yeah.
The eleventh and the twelfth.
Yeah.
So.
And Saturday is also, if you don't want to pick up garbage or go to Memory Makers, you have Marshall Free Fire Department's golf outing is up at Fernwood. I'll take one for the team, I'll go up there.
We wanted to express a thank you, uh, to Wayne Bank, who conducted their first time home buyer seminar last night at the Community and Cultural Center. So, um, they, they did a terrific job of that, uh, Charlie, you were there, what were your thoughts?
It's very well, and, uh, I was hoping there would be more people that were in the market for buying a home. And as I was mentioning earlier, informing that, you know, as we know, some of the folks were there, there were more investors looking to get loans for investment properties, and they understand, learn that these grants aren't meant for owner-occupied properties, but I think we're getting the word out, and, um, you know, I'm already putting the word out that, um, my agency no longer doing it, but let's get such a, Wayne Bank, I was worried out today, so people might be looking. So I think, um, good point, it's part of buying our dollars and interest rates, so. But, you know, it was a good, good meeting, very well, very well presented, and very well done.
Thank you.
And I wanted to, also, if anybody's watching this cleanup in the next few days, I want to encourage you, please come out for a cleanup, uh, for a street pick, a thousand feet cleanup. You may not be aware that actually, Pick Up is originated right here in Middle Smithfield. And, uh, it was our efforts here that began the entire process, and become part of something that's part of history, and help you work it clean, but it's a fun day, and we know a lot of people. I just want to encourage anybody that sees this, Roger.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, correspondence. A letter from, uh, Monterey County Meals on Wheels was received, a thank you letter to the township for hosting a client needs pantry drive for the organization during the month of August. Thank you. That brings us to the treasures report.
Can you make a motion for our general count seventy-six thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents?
Sorry. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our sewer count forty thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our golf account five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our liquid fuel account, two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and one cent.
I'll second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our cable franchise account nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. And for our general obligation bonds, five hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Uh, really all ahead.
Thank you. Sneaks report.
Uh, thank you, the first item on my report is the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, Article Four. Uh, your last work session, we went through some additional, uh, sections of Article Four, I'm not sure if the board wanted to continue that discussion this evening, or fold, if we had questions or concerns, it's probably went over into work sessions. Thanks, man. Say hold it. You can handle it for now.
Okay.
Um, then the next item on my report is again, uh, another proposed ordinance adding chapter one forty-four, which is for would-be the right-of-way maintenance, uh, enacting rules and regulations concerning parking during winter storms, required maintenance of sidewalks and curbs and other pedestrians that pass, and construction events. Not sure if the board wanted to discuss that at this point.
Well, we did discuss it at a workshop session with you, um, I'm not sure, is, is there anything that could go forward?
Uh, that's up, that's up to the board supervisors, I did make some slight, uh, changes based upon that discussion at the work session, specifically, I am proposing to delete, uh, the section with respect to designated certain zoning districts, which it would apply, will apply to on page six. And also, I believe deleting the entire exemptions section associated with the proposed ordinance.
I, I think that that was the consensus of the board, no?
Hmm.
On those two changes?
Yeah. And then since then, I, I do have, I did make some slight, nothing substantive, more like cleanup type, uh, edits. Uh, but other than that, unless the board has questions or concerns, uh, if it's something you want to move forward with, the next step would be, uh, this isn't a sound, this isn't a zoning, so this can be advertised for a public hearing if you like.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that.
I agree.
Oh, but it, so, let me just, just so, um, what that is, it's important that basically says that there's, you know, if there's a sidewalk in front of your property, the property owner is responsible to maintain it if they have a sidewalk on their property, no matter who puts it in. Uh, whether you do it by grant, this now working, we've submitted grants to put in for sidewalks in front of things. Um, and if the property owner, uh, would prefer that it goes in the PENDOT right of way, instead of on their property, um, the township can get a grant and put it in the PENDOT right of way, and they're still responsible for it. Would that be a good summary?
If, if the proposed sidewalk is meeting in the right of way, is immediately abutted and adjacent to that property owner's property, yes.
Yeah. So this would allow us to move forward with.
Well, it would, it, it, the next step would be to authorize it to be advertised.
No, no, I mean, if we, if this were in place, this would allow us to move forward with, uh, applying for grants and getting sidewalks in.
Well, you can, you can apply for grants at this point. What this ordinance will do is it will enact provisions requiring property owners where a public sidewalk or their property abuts the public right of way with a sidewalk. It will require them to remove the snow and ice in the, in the case of a snowstorm. It will require them to repair it or replace or maintain, properly maintain that sidewalk that's on their property or immediately abutting in property within a public right of way.
Yeah, when you started talking about this, when tractor supply was putting in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, so.
It also, it also, uh, in, includes a provision, uh, authorizing the requirement to construct the sidewalk in the event this township felt it was necessary in a particular area.
Uh, yes, yeah.
Hypothetically, if the property owner had a half a mile of frontage and a sidewalk was built, would they be responsible for a half a mile of snow removed?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, um, so for a date for public hearing, our meeting's in October fall on the tenth and the twenty-four. So it would be reasonable for perhaps the twenty-fourth or November seventh?
We, when we meet, November.
November seventh. And the twenty-first is budget.
So I would say November seventh to give it the full month, thirty days, whatever.
So November seventh?
You need a motion for that?
Just to authorize it to be advertised for the November seventh meeting, yep.
So moved.
I'll second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. And the last item on my report this evening is another proposed, uh, draft ordinance amending chapter one fifty for short-term rentals within township, uh, requiring or adding a provision, uh, requiring installation and reuse of a noise monitor on the property. That is a short-term rental. Uh, now, this ordinance is the same it was initially, but I believe at your work session, we did discuss, or you did discuss revising it slightly as to more of encourage the, uh, installation of a noise monitor on the property, correct? Is, was that the direction of the conversation, it was more of any?
Yes, did you receive anything from, say, Sean, or?
No.
Was there, well, there was some language in other municipalities' ordinances that could be used. Here, I don't know, Mark, if you looked at anything or had any input?
Not really. Not really, really.
Okay.
It takes, Littlefield just passed pretty comprehensive noise ordinance. Um, if you were able to speak to them.
So, this is a noise ordinance, so Mike, this is just a noise monitor for the short-term rental.
Right.
Yeah, I did see an email come through, um, and there was some brief discussion, I guess, about the noise provisions in general for Middle Smithfield Township. Now, Middle Smithfield, there is no noise provision in your nuisance chapter. Where your noise ordinance, or where your noise provision come into is in your zoning ordinance. Uh, and that's where you have some references to decibels, depending upon the district and the neighboring district. Uh, but you don't have a standalone, a quote-unquote standalone noise.
Right.
Ordinance.
Right.
Uh, that would be separate from the state from this, this is, this is the short-term rental amendment that would somehow incorporate a noise monitor uh, for those short-term rental properties. And my understanding, or my recollection from the discussion of the work session was maybe not require one, but
But encourage.
Highly encourage it.
I don't think you were in favor of the discount on the permit fee, okay. So it would be encouraged, and then?
Two, two strikes.
Yeah, if you had to verify complaints on separate occasions, not the same short-term renter on a Friday night and again on a Saturday night, but two separate rentals, then you would be required to put one in, if you had two enforced complaints.
With one.
That was, that was how I remember we left off. But I guess you needed to know that.
So is the town, does the town, does the board want me to revise the draft short-term rental ordinance amendment that I previously prepared, changing the requirement for a noise monitor to make it a more of a recommending type state, a highly encouraging?
Yes.
I thought, sure, I thought for sure we talked about that.
We did.
We did.
Oh, but we didn't provide the language, though. We, I copied and pasted from something, I think it was Toby Hannah, as an example of what that is.
And
So there's that.
So the encouragement, recommendation, uh, for the noise monitor, but I wanted, is that tied into your prior, your, the other discussion regarding two strikes, and you?
Yes, it was the same, yeah.
How does it tie, I guess my question is, I, I don't remember that piece of the conversation, how does that tie?
There for that.
Oh, so how does, are you saying those with a noise monitor?
No, anybody with a short-term rental, if you have two complaints that were verified on two separate rentals.
Regarding a noise.
For noise, then you would be required to get this noise monitor.
Okay. There, that's the piece I was just saying. No, no, collect two hundred dollars.
Yeah, do not pass go, do not collect two hundred dollars, go directly to jail.
Okay.
Or Home Depot, reach out a little more.
Yeah, or Amazon, I mean, it's like fifty bucks.
Okay, so general, required, general provision amendment would be to encourage, um, and then the mandatory installation of noise monitor follows two complaints, two valid complaints of noise infractions.
Yes.
Okay.
Of two separate.
Yep.
Renters.
Okay. Uh, does the board want me to prepare that draft ordinance and circulate, uh, this for the claims, for the authorization, you advertise that at a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark, do you make that? Motion, and then I'll second, and then comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That is everything out of my report, unless, I probably have some comments or questions or guidance on some additional agenda items, but unless there's questions or comments from the board at this time, that's all from my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Your results, I'm going to tell you that. Or study. That overworded, Tom, so.
Oh, yes, that's not on here, but it was like these, and it's so funny that you say that, because that was just on CBS this morning. It was like a soft zoning to encourage people who wanted to put, um, you know,
Second.
A secondary use, like an accessory use, because with the shortage of housing, people are looking towards these kinds of things to, to, to build accessory buildings for families. Like a parent or a child, an adult child, yeah. So Sean sent us over, um, some information on that, I don't know if it made it way, its way to you.
Our provision? It, it's to encourage additional house, rental house.
That's affordable.
That's affordable, yeah, so it would be on the same parcel existing property or home. And we don't have any provision for that, huh?
Yeah, it's like.
We don't even have the mother-daughter kind of.
Well, we have mother-daughter, but it's required to go on the deed, well, one of the few municipalities that require it to be, uh, on the deed, and it can, so that it can only be a family member, if you did.
That's, that's, that's not, that's normal.
Oh, okay.
That's called the in-law suite, and the reason, uh, most, most municipalities, when they have a zoning ordinance of, of, you know, applying to that type of accessory in law suite, the requirement is that they sign and record a declaration saying that it can only ever be a family member, uh, and that's a way to prevent it from becoming and developing into basically a apartment.
But with the housing situation the way it is, or municipalities are actively, actively looking to try to do something like this, certainly wouldn't be in every zoning district, but there may be a spot in the township where we can
happens if you're in the in-law suite.
Encourage or allow, you know, some of them are, are looking, and if they're having it out there in front of people, let them know we're looking at, potentially doing something, get a little feedback.
So we're, we're happy to send that to you for your thought.
Okay.
We should have that enough to do. Okay, are we ready for the engineers report?
I think so, uh, thanks for having me here tonight, filling in for Ben, uh, he's a childcare commitment. I know we'll be hopping on here in a little bit to go over the, uh, LSA grants, uh, so I'll give him a heads up while we're going through the old business section. Um, so the next two items, they're closely linked together, uh, the utility highway occupancy permit application, uh, the sewage planning module mailer. Uh, these are both for, um, the property of fifty-one twenty-eight Milford Road, um, and this is a landlocked parcel in the C-one commercial zoning district, uh, and this has an access, um, through an easement, uh, between the Mueller diner and the mobile gas station along PA two oh nine. So, uh, this, this has been in the process of land development since, uh, May of twenty twenty-three. Uh, at this moment in time, they're, the applicant's looking to connect to the public sewer. Uh, so they submitted a sewage facility planning exemption mailer, uh, and they've also, um, submitted a M nine fifty AA form, uh, so they're looking to connect to the public sewer, um, Ben reviewed the existing collection, uh, capacity and treatment capacity, uh, for what they're proposing. They're proposing six hundred gallons per day or three EDUs. Um, and this won't cause, um, an overload, uh, at any of the facilities within the next five years. There's capacity to convey this under the existing, uh, Forest Main under two oh nine, uh, that continues east, and it'll be treated at the, uh, Middle Smithfield Township Waste Water Treatment Plant and discharged to the Bushkill. Um, so this was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting last week, uh, and they recommended, uh, the board take action, uh, to allow municipal official to sign this sewage facility planning module mailer, uh, and then be able to send it up to DEP. So, there, there are two potential issues, uh, that could come up, um, in the future for the applicant. Uh, these are not directly of concern to the township. Um, this was originally outside of the public sewer service area um, on the existing Act five thirty-seven plan for the township. And they have to ultimately resolve, uh, the issue with access, since this is a landlocked parcel, they own the parcel next to it. They will eventually need to establish a sanitary easement, um, for this connection, uh, to the Forest Main within, uh, PA two oh nine. So, uh, then the utility highway occupancy permit, uh, the M nine fifty AA form, um, PENDOT requires that for all utilities that are proposed, uh, in their right of way, that there is a highway occupancy permit that's received. Um, and they also require, uh, in the case where the township owns, uh, sewer department or sewer authority, uh, that the township itself is the applicant. So, uh, this M nine fifty AA form is to allow, uh, William Whitman, um, of Whitman Engineers, uh, from Morgantown, PA, to submit on behalf of the township. So they've agreed to copy, uh, the, both Ben Cutts and, uh, the township, um, on their application to PENDOT. So there'll be an email that goes to Michelle when they actually submit. Um, so, yeah, they recommend that the township also, uh, take action on that tonight. Uh, and then there's another item that's not on the agenda, um, the annual MS four report, uh, was submitted to DEP earlier this week for review.
And just for clarification, that's the personal care home?
Yeah, that's correct, yes, that's the personal care home facility.
Certainly, yeah. Or B and B.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, personal care home, Destiny Empowerment House and Groups. Actually, I don't think.
So the township had no concern signing these documents?
No concern assigning these documents. It might eventually, um, D, DEP may require full sewage planning, but the, that's on the applicant to complete that at that time, so. From a, a treatment standpoint, from a collection standpoint, there's no issues. Uh, and for, uh, the M nine fifty AA form, also no issues, um, then the township will be copied on correspondence.
Okay. I have no questions. Anyone? Um, okay. All right, well, thank you.
John doesn't even know what the right signature on a township's behalf is.
Yeah.
But Mark, do you make that?
Yeah, I make a motion on, do I need two motions, Pat?
Yes.
One for the utility highway occupancy permit application of PENDOT. That's one motion.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
On the address for the sewage planning module model.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just took a minute back to the accessory dwellings, and it was actually Face the Nation, and it was the governor of Colorado who was talking about um, allowing people to build accessory dwelling homes, mother-in-law flats by right in certain zoning districts, so that must have been partially reassured, yeah, so there, there's history that we can grab on that, other people's stuff. Okay, well, thank you, Drew. All right, on to old business, uh, revitalized two oh nine grant applications. So just as an update, um, Dr. Nails has withdrawn their application at this time. They're still have some wood to chop. Uh, barely used tires for their paving, front and side parking lot visible from it, two oh nine. They, um, there's no change there, they're still working on getting their extra, uh, their additional quotes. And then mobile gas, um, removing and replacing the siding on the building. Although it's ready for action now, I would make a motion to table it to give the board of supervisors time to review and speak to the committee.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Now we're on to new business. Uh, resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty-four dash three. I believe that one is yours, Mike?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to adopt resolution nine dash twenty twenty-four dash three, which is the LSA application with their Wooddale Park, et cetera.
Okay, so this would be the resolution to make the LSA application? So a motion is second, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just clarified that the resolution, um, some of the numbers have to change a bit. Um, we did have our engineer put the estimate together in the format required by H D C E D, which jacked it up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, so the ask would be two seventy-five, six thirty-seven.
Drew, did you do this?
No, Ben. Ben did it.
This is Ben who did this, um, I, I got a text from him saying he's hopping on shortly, um. So if we, uh, if we get slightly out of order, uh, we can come back to this item, and then, uh, hopefully he'll be able to hop on.
Okay.
If I have to, Ben Destin is here, you wanna add to your?
Add it to our pack. Who want him? Would you have one for Pat?
Yep.
Okay.
You can add one. So. So.
Okay, so, okay, so uh the project cost is three hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred, uh excuse me, six hundred and thirty seven.
Correct.
We're requesting three hundred and twenty five thousand.
No, we're requesting two seventy five, six thirty seven.
Oh. Wait a moment.
Well, he's he's gotta fix this, I guess he.
Yeah, because look, it says it.
Says that, yeah, he didn't knock it down.
Okay.
So I'll have him fix that. When he gets here.
Okay.
Put the kid to bed, I guess.
Tell me, tell me again.
Gotta wrangle them all.
Right.
Yeah.
So total project estimate is is three twenty five, six thirty seven.
Uh huh.
The ask on D C E D is two seventy five, six thirty seven.
Okay.
And we are also in the resolution, um, we are picking out the word acquisition in the first paragraph. The rest and C F A used for the design and development of a new multi use park, new space. Leave cop compost recycling subcenter, that's a bit aggressive, but that's okay. This sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so a motion and a second. And we can ask Ben any questions when he comes on, so uh all any comments or question, oh, yes.
Yeah, how would how would we find out more about it? Like, how would we, that's for young people. I find out where they're going, what should we do, like where they would be buying that.
Well, you just did, um. So basically, um, you know, the Wooddale section of Middle Smithfield Township?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Um, it's further up, up, deep road, oh yeah. Um, so right now, we don't have any parks up in that area. So we own land where we have um a garage for Public Works. So what we're doing is is we're buying the property next to us. So the combined lots would be about ten acres. And then we can develop that area um with recreation opportunities, whether it be swings and, you know, slides, et cetera, walking trails um and then expanded buildings, so it could be used by, you know, some of the H O As up there or voice guests, whoever wants to use indoor facilities. Um, and and the intent is to grow this as grant funds become available, similar to what we've done in other parks. Um, there was talk about a pickleball court. Uh but when we did the research, at least commercially, if we went commercially, Pocono Township paid hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a pickleball court. I had no intention of spending a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a pickleball court. I guess.
Hundred and seventy, what kind of?
I don't know, I mean, it it it's hopefully it's gold lettered or something.
It should be, yeah.
Um.
Who's getting used?
Well, I I'm not one to gamble with a hundred and seventy thousand, I mean, you know, there there's certainly other uses we could do, but in any case, so the idea is just like our other parks and um other other ventures. Well, basically the grant will dictate what we do in any given year. So like this grant we put in um by Monday, the the application, I think we'll hear good, better and different, what, March?
Yeah, it should be March or April, sometimes they're a little late.
So if we get to go ahead, then we can start spending money or contracting. Um, you wouldn't believe it, I mean, swings can be upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, because it it's not just swings in your backyard anymore, now you need the the fancy mulch, so they don't get cut and all sort of stuff, so. Um. So, that's the plan.
People aren't interested in pickleball, we will have it at Pocono Ridge. It's already there and the owners are are trying to play the game.
Right, I mean, it is, it is considered uh.
What did you think I said?
Uh, yeah, certainly, uh, but the owners of the former Deerfield Spa, that's gonna be called Pocono Ridge, actually, we put in a pickleball court there. And there's a pickleball.
They got.
Plus, it'll be open.
They're rich, but I mean.
It's just that I thought it was meaningful, it just seems like it's gonna be another, basically, another kids' park, that's it.
Well, I mean, it'll have walking trails. Uh, we intend to use it also for up there, I mean, it's 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 an underserved area, whether it be recreation, what have you. Um, most of the municipal services are down here, um so what we wanted to do is, I mean, I forget what they call it, it's compost subcenter, that's a bit aggressive. I mean, we'll have bins up there where they can come, residents can drop off leaves or they can take mulch, that kind of thing. Um, because it is pretty far, I mean, it's a good twenty minute ride, you know, from Wooddale down to here.
Uh, oh, sorry.
What did the facility, the couple, so they would have the grinder thing that we have down here?
Right, no, no, no.
It knows when it's been started.
Just just storage, pickup, drop off, no, the grinding, everything stays down Oak Road. No, you know, commercial operation up there per se. But again, that that will be part of a DEP grant uh that we go for with the compost and the and the uh mulch, so there's a lot of grants out there and hopefully we can get some.
Well, we do have the ability to adjust this too, right, because there, I mean, there are two other parks in the area, there's Orchard Park, which has the work walking trails, that's like a mile away.
Well, that's in price, that they don't have, it's just, they just cut the grants, that's all they do.
And then there's um a forty acre Forever Green is less than five miles away. So maybe, you know, but you do, you do have the I, you do have the flexibility to make this complimentary to the other recreational offerings in the area.
We don't have it.
Well, just as more than one town, you don't need to be a resident of the township to use the park.
Agreed, absolutely, absolutely.
Smithfield found that out with Marshall's Falls and we certainly found that out with our dog park.
Right, but I think that.
Township or not.
Well, but I think if we own it, we maintain it to our standards as opposed to, I mean, we got the TV news here, but I mean, Smithfield does a great job, you know, with their parks, so.
Well, all I'm saying is it it seems like we have the flexibility when we receive the funds to review what goes in.
Absolutely.
And have it be complimentary to the already existing Orchard Park and.
Yeah, like I said, that's just 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 grass, so whatever we do will improve it.
The Forever Green Nature Trail has a lot to it, too.
Yeah, what is that? Well, that is the way it said, so the natural park service is five miles from Echo Lake.
Right.
There's a lot of walking trails there, too, but we still have it, we make improvements and I call it all the time.
So that's true, because it has a community center sitting in it and soccer field.
Five miles away from thousands of acres, they're all developed, up a few.
Right, right.
I I'm still, I'm sorry, I I'm still open, I understand what you said, a hundred and seventy five thousand, but it doesn't sound like that much, um, that there was that much in in investigation into that, like it's because I I know that that's not correct. So we'll be open and.
A hundred and seventy five.
Investigate on it and find out what the cause, something, a tennis court.
Well, we have, we have.
Something for people to do, so we don't have to go to every other township.
Right, we have, we have estimates that accompany the application, yeah.
Okay.
We have actual, yeah, we have actual estimates.
Well, and the residents could always make suggestions, the residents from the area, so what they would like to see.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And your estimate was the hundred and seventy five, that's just.
No, 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 the the hundred and seventy for the pickleball, we called Pocono to see what they spent.
Okay.
And they said a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So basically, we said, right, well, that's that that's insane, so.
Yes, true.
I know, I know, we, I would mention about Smithfield and parks, I want to give them on the on the alternative or help them this summer, they have come a really big step in getting this thing up, doing what they have to do, how they're getting things straightened.
Yes.
So we still have it there, but um.
Mm hmm, agree.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? For this grant application with the with the, so I guess your motion, Mike, is with the updated numbers.
Correct.